I can't see one of these things very good. Okay, everybody ready? The January 11, 2016 meeting of the City of Danville Planning Commission is now called Water. We welcome everyone to this meeting. Planning Commission is an advisory board to the Danville City Council and is comprised of members who serve on a voluntary basis. Today we have three items which to consider, which there will be a public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak for or against the case may do so at that time. After the public hearing, commissioning members may have questions for staff and for those who have spoken for or against the requested change. Planning Commission will review the case relative to the city code and make a recommendation to forward to the city council. Council will consider these items at their February 2 meeting. So if we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Dotson?
President.
Mr. Garrison?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Bolton?
Here.
Okay, first item on the agenda today is the election of the officers for the year 2016, and I will turn the meeting over to our city attorney.
All right. Welcome all of you all to the new year, and for election, we have three officers that we will be electing today. We'll be electing a chairman, a vice chairman, and a secretary, or yes, a secretary. So what I will do, first of all, is I will open up the floor for nominations for chairman, and please remember, they do not require a second, so the floor is now open for nominations for chairman. Mr. Jones?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Scares.
All right, Mr. Scares has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nomination, and if you would reply by saying yes if Mr. Scares is your choice for chairman, if you will call the roll, please.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Scares, it was unanimous.
Thanks.
I will now open up the floor for nominations for vice chairman. Again, it does not require a second, so the floor is now open for nominations for the office of vice chairman. Mr. Jones?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Wilson to be vice chair.
Mr. Wilson has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, we will close the nominations, and if Mr. Wilson is your choice for vice chairman, please indicate by saying yes when the roll is called.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Wilson. Now we will do one last office, and that is the office of secretary, so now...
Hold on, Mr. Wilson, do you vote for yourself?
I don't think his name was called.
My name wasn't called.
It wasn't, that's why we're asking, will you vote for yourself?
Hmm, yes.
Thank you.
Now, congratulations. He had the majority anyway, it didn't matter which way.
I know, just for posterity.
All right, and we will now, now open the floor for nominations for secretary. Mr. Jones?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Evans to be secretary.
All right, Mrs. Evans has been nominated for secretary. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I will call the, I will call for the vote now.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Abstain.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
And I will compliment, before I turn the meeting back over, I'll compliment Mr. Jones, the fastest way to make sure you don't get in office is to nominate all the officers. So congratulations to each of you, and I will turn it back over to our new chairman.
Well, thank you. Okay, hold the business then. First item on the agenda is a rezoning application, PLRZ 2015-0000-366 filed by Piedmont Place One LLC requesting to rezone from OTR, Old Town Residential, to HRC, Highway Retail Commercial District, parcel IDs number 57218, 57216, 57217, 57215, 50320, 57214, and 57228. The applicant is proposing to rezone to allow for consolidation and future development. I'll open the public hearing now, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Would you like a staff report?
I'm sorry.
You don't have to have it, I just...
No, let's go ahead and have a staff report.
A request has been filed by Piedmont Place One LLC requesting to rezone from OTR, Old Town Residential, to HRC, Highway Retail Commercial, parcel ID numbers 57218, 57217, 57216, 57215, 50320, 57214, and 57228, otherwise known as grid 0716, block 012, parcel 000011 through 000017, respectively of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map. And the applicant is proposing to rezone to allow for future development. The subject properties consist of seven individual parcels on the corner of Westover Drive and Jerry Drive, which have a gross acreage of 1.38 acres. The subject properties previously belonged to the Wentz Estates and were sold to Piedmont Place One LLC in December of 2015. Four of the subject properties have had their primary structures demolished, and the three houses that remain are vacant and in poor condition. The subject properties lie within a mixed-use area near Piedmont Drive with bordering properties zoned both residential and commercial. The corner block abuts a parcel on the corner of Piedmont Drive and Piedmont Place that was recently rezoned for development at the request of Piedmont Place One LLC. The rezoning of the subject properties by Piedmont Place One LLC is requested so that they may be commercially developed. Twenty notices were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the subject property, and a full report is in front of you. Staff recommends approval of rezoning application, PLRZ 2015-0000-366 filed by Piedmont Place One LLC requesting to rezone from OTR, Old Town Residential, to HRC, Highway Retail Commercial, parcel ID numbers 57218, 57217, 57216, 57215, 50320, 57214, and 57228, otherwise known as grid 0716, block 012, parcel 000011 through 000017, respectively of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map. Staff recognizes that the properties abut residential use along Jerry Drive. While this may burden some, the zoning code establishes certain protections for residential property owners abutting commercially zoned establishments. Article 3m, Section 8, Item 8 mandates that where a lot is contiguous to property located in a residential district, all buildings shall have a minimum setback of 30 feet from common property lines. Additionally, a landscape buffer strip shall be provided in accord with the transitional buffer yard requirements for commercial residential properties, with landscape materials and placement subject to site plan approval.
Okay, thank you. Now, we've got more information, I'll reopen the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close it, and see if there's any questions from the commissioners.
Is there someone here representing?
No, there's no one here.
I knew eventually I'd be put in this position. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to?
No. No, there's no one here speaking for or against the item on the agenda.
I have concerns about that because we do have opposition from the community.
Does anybody have a knowledge of why there was nobody here representing Piedmont Place LLC? I mean, it sounds like a pretty substantial group that would have interest in being here, to me.
Mm-hmm.
Lot of commercial real estate.
Can we send a letter to notify the time and place of the meeting?
Well, also, there's no one here actually in person in opposition either.
Well, yeah, I know that, and that may be the gray area for me, you know? I don't know. It just, again, it creates that same problem. If there were issues, the person that actually owns the property can't speak to it, and so, you know, we're just kind of going on the assumption that everything is just the way that it's supposed to be. We actually do have opposition, as Anna said, I mean, even though they're not here either.
Who is Piedmont Place? They've been before us before, haven't they?
They have been before you before. Usually they have an engineer who's a representative, who comes to speak on their behalf. I don't know, I haven't spoken to them about this case, so I don't know why they don't have a representative here.
Do you remember a case that they were involved with? I'm just trying to figure out who they are.
It's part of the Daniel Group.
Who?
It's part of the Daniel Group, I think.
It's part of the Daniel Group, and usually land engineering and design represents them. I don't know if that's their representative on this behalf. I didn't take the application in, so I don't know. Usually that's the person who comes and speaks for them.
Okay, that's what I was asking, so they, they've been here before on this Westover consolidation anyway, haven't they? I mean, it's kind of similar, or...
It's part of that whole property in the corner where we just had the hotel potential in...
Right, it's just another part of that.
They're getting that whole block, basically.
I don't see that as being really that new to have, I mean, to delay it because of, I mean, if it was something brand new, we didn't know what it was.
Well, you have, it, it's a little bit different because we do have residential properties that are right snug up to these, but again, those people themselves are not here. Maybe they felt like by writing letters, that was enough. I know, I, it's, it's an awkward position, I guess it's, for me, it's just a matter of, it looks to me like we're going to have this problem with some other cases today as well, and I'm just concerned about the assumption. It's, I'm not sure it's good citizenship, good, good management to be making these big decisions with no real thing, but I'm, that's all I'm going to say about that.
They, they will have to come back before they can build anything on it, won't they?
Come back in front of the planning commission?
To the planning commission.
Depending on what they do...
If they, if it's within the code designation, they're free to do.
If it's within the zoning district, it's allowed, and they do the consolidation, that would be all administrative approval, so no, they may not. If they require a special use permit for setbacks or anything else, then yes, they would have to come back. At this point, I don't know how to answer that one definitively.
And it, and it's, you know, again, this is like the other one we dealt with. The project itself is not an issue, so much, especially that there's no opposition here. It just really renders the, the whole idea of what we do kind of moot, in my opinion, but...
Well, we're, we're just passing on our decision to city council, so I don't know if they show up at city council or decline not to, how they will react to it.
We will notify them, notify them the outcome, no matter what it is today, and if it makes it to city council, we notify them when that meeting is as well.
Let me, let me ask this, because I don't want to be a pain about this, and I'm being a pain about it, I really apologize, but if, what are our options here? If we were to, if we were to approve it, then it just goes to city council. If we were to vote it down, it, what happens next?
It still goes to city council, just with, just with a negative recommendation from the planning commission meeting.
Would there be an explanation of why it was negative?
If you vote it down and spell out the reason why in your vote, then yes, that would go to city council.
And if we tabled it?
Then it would be read advertised and would come back to this board next month.
Well, I would like to go on record saying I'm not in favor of approving anything where the applicant is not here to address any concerns.
I have questions, but I also have faith in our staff, and they recommend approval. They have looked into it, we have read, we have been on site, some of us have, but I still have to go with staff on this, if they recommend. Now, if they put in here that if no one shows, blah, 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 and so forth, I would go with that recommendation too, but I'm on record as saying I go with the staff recommendation. Especially when, they've been here before, we know who these, this group is, and we know they're generally here, so it must be a reason behind it that they're not here, I would hope or think.
Well, I don't think they expected probably any, it's in a commercial area that's changing to commercial, I expect, they thought there would not be any, they just be, there's nothing to say, nothing to do, so I'm assuming, that's why they did, and I know what you're saying, we should assume.
Yeah, but what if there was? I mean, they're not here, but what if there was? What if we had seven residents sitting out there?
We'd probably turn it down.
They'd turn it down.
I would either turn it down or table it.
So go ahead.
Interesting dilemma.
Just one other, the 30-foot setback and the landscape buffer, that's not a condition specific to this case. It was in there just saying that's normal.
That's normal. Between commercial and residential property, that is normal. They have an option, depending on how intensive the landscaping is, to possibly lessen the buffer. The setback itself, building setback, is still that standard 30 feet from the road. The amount of vegetative buffer depends on the density of the vegetation. You know, if you do less trees, then it's a wider buffer. If you do more intense vegetation, then it's a narrower buffer, but they will be buffer between the residential and commercial.
Right, so that's not a condition.
No, that's just standard in the code.
Okay.
Well, do I entertain an emotion? Go ahead.
I'll just move that we recommend approval of rezoning application, PLRZ 2015-0000-366 as submitted.
Okay, you have a second?
Second here.
You have a second by Mr. Jones? We could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is rezoning application, PLRZ 2015-0000-367 filed by Industrial Development Authority requesting to rezone from IM Industrial Manufacturing District to TOC, Traditional Office Commercial District, .5996 acres of parcel ID number 60538. The applicant is proposing to rezone to allow for consolidation of the adjacent parcel ID number 60539. If we could have a staff report, please.
A request has been filed by Industrial Development Authority requesting to rezone from IM Industrial Manufacturing District to TOC, Transitional Office Commercial, .5996 acres of parcel ID number 60538, otherwise known as grid 0608, block 004, parcel 00022 of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map. The applicant is proposing to rezone to allow for consolidation with adjacent parcel ID number 60539. In August of 2015, the subject property was rezoned from TOC, Transitional Office Commercial, to IM Industrial Manufacturing District, and a special use permit was issued for the construction and operation of a cellular tower. Subsequently, ownership of the subject property was transferred from the Industrial Development Authority of Danville to Blue Ridge Towers, Inc. on November 13, 2015, and construction began on a 150-foot monopole cellular tower in December of 2015. The Industrial Development Authority originally intended that parcel ID number 60538 be subdivided so that the portion to be transferred to Blue Ridge Towers and be rezoned to serve as a cellular tower site would not include the .5996 subject acres. The subject .5996 acres was not initially intended to be rezoned as IM Industrial Manufacturing in August of 2015. However, due to time restrictions for the tower's construction, the whole of parcel ID number 60538 was transferred to Blue Ridge Towers, rezoned, and the construction started before the subject parcel could be subdivided. Since the subject parcel was rezoned in August of 2015, it has been surveyed for the future subdivision and consolidation. However, the subject parcel cannot be subdivided and consolidated with the adjacent parcel until it is rezoned in accordance with Article 3Q, Section F, Item 1 of the zoning code, stating that the minimum lot size for a parcel zoned IM Industrial Manufacturing District is five acres. The Industrial Development Authority wishes to have the .5996 acres rezoned to its original zoning district, TOC, Transitional Office Commercial, so that it can stand alone and eventually be consolidated with adjacent parcel ID number 60539, which is also owned by the Industrial Development Authority. Ten notices were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the subject property, and a full report is in front of you. Staff recommends approval of rezoning application, PLRZ 2015-0000-367 filed by the Industrial Development Authority of Danville requesting to rezone from IM Industrial Manufacturing to TOC, Transitional Office Commercial on parcel ID number 60538, otherwise known as grid 0608, block 004, parcel 00022 of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Okay, thank you very much. Open the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Anyone at all? Okay, close the public hearing. I do know this is, obviously, is part of the city, and Mr. Morris has been at with some medical leave, so...
I was going to say that the day of the lateral ascent is the day that he had to report out of town, so that may be, and I might be able to answer some of those questions if it's not inappropriate.
Okay, any, any questions from any of the commissioners?
This is the property that, for the tower.
Right, the tower.
The only objection we had, it wasn't even objection, it was a lady was here about the grass and all, has, has that been cut?
It has to her satisfaction, and if you'll notice, she is the one person in the report that voted that she was not opposed to the rezoning. She's very, I've talked with her, followed up with her, and she has been very pleased with the maintenance of that property.
Go ahead.
This is a basic clawback of land that they bought, that they don't need, that we wanted to maintain, and we just had to, once the tower got up, this comes back to us, the IDA, so.
Great. Any other questions? If any, could we have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion on this one, if I can find my, hang on one second. Ah, let's see. Recommend approval of rezoning application, PLR 2015-000367 as admitted.
Okay.
I may have left out a zero there.
You have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Garrison, okay? Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Okay, the next item, the third one, is special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000-368 filed by KFG Properties LLC requesting a special use permit for the operation of convenience store and deli with gasoline sales in accordance with Article 3k, Section C, Item 6 of the Code of the City of Danville, as amended at 541 North Main Street. The applicant is proposing to operate a convenience store without gasoline sales at this location. Could have a staff report, please.
A request has been filed by KFG Properties LLC requesting a special use permit for the operation of a convenience and deli store without gasoline sales in accordance with Article 3k, Section C, Item 6 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended at 541 North Main Street, otherwise known as grid 2710, block 028, parcel 000016 of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map. The applicant is proposing to operate a convenience store without gasoline sales at this location. The .15 acre property on the corner of North Main Street and Church Street was acquired by KFG Properties LLC in 2013 and is zoned CBC, Central Business Commercial. Operating as a tire repair business for many years, this structure is a contributing structure to the North Danville Historic District and was constructed circa 1930. Presently, KFG Properties LLC would like to adapt the 1,842 square foot building into a convenience store. A four-foot by 16-foot addition onto the left side of the structure is planned in order for the building to better function as a convenience store. A plan review has been conducted on the plans for the proposed addition. At present, the plans are still under review, awaiting further information regarding various building code concerns. Twenty-nine notices were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the subject property, and a complete report is in front of you. Staff recommends approval of special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000-368 filed by KFG Properties LLC to allow for the operation of a convenience store without gasoline sales in accordance with Article 3k, Section C, Item 6 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended at 541 North Main Street. Staff recommends approval with the condition that the hours of operation remain limited to a maximum of 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. in accordance with the hours of operation of neighboring commercial facilities.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing on this item. If there's anyone like to come and speak, you can do so at this time. Just give us your name for the record, please.
I have to put this down a little bit. Good afternoon, my name is Steve Del Giorno. I'm the owner and president of Parko International. We're the company that developed and opened the 616 Farm-to-Table Restaurant directly across the street from the proposed property. I'm here today to urge you to deny this application, and my reasons are as follows. By nature, I'm a little nervous speaking to this group, I don't know why, excuse me. By nature, convenience stores have a history, first and foremost, of attracting crime. And with the amount of investment that we've made and others have made into this district, most recently, we don't think this is a positive addition to the neighborhood of the commercial district of what is called now Neapolis. Crime could be anything from petty theft inside convenience stores to armed robbery, and even murder, which actually took place across the street from this proposed location 20 years ago. Furthermore, convenience stores, which you can see it today evident in Danville and the area, they attract loitering, and it's unwanted loitering, not just inside the business, but also outside the business in the parking lot, which we feel would make our customers uncomfortable. Over the past 20 years, the North Main Commercial District and the surrounding area has benefited from new focus from Danville's Police Department, the Community Development Committee, as well as the Economic Development Group, and as such, we have seen the neighborhood stabilize. We've seen crime rates, incidents have declined, and new investment has come in, especially from people such as myself. This committee as well, in the 90s, along with city council, actually approved a plan, a very aggressive plan, to dezone the area to R2 Residential. In doing so, that really helped kind of stabilize the neighborhood, and from that point on, new investment, entrepreneurial investment came in and redid the North Theater. After the North Theater was developed, then we saw other buildings being developed, as Family Dollar came in, most recently in the last few years, Moon River Tide opened up on the, in the north, in the historic North Theater building, and we, of course, opened the 616 Farm-to-Table Restaurant. The zoning today of the Central Business District excludes convenience stores, we believe, for good reason, and we feel like the vision of the city and those who are behind the River District and the Central Business District and the Tourism District feel that businesses that should come in should fill a niche, and those should be niches, businesses that not only improve the overall, overall neighborhood for the residents, but also to encourage business. It's all about bringing in business, and if we can bring in more business and stabilize these neighborhoods further, that improves Danville's overall tax base. So an argument could be made that maybe that this convenience store fills a niche, but I disagree with that as well, because just across the street in the next block, there is a convenience store that's been grandfathered in for more than 20 years, and a short four blocks away, there's another one at the corner of North Main and James Street. So members of the planning commission, if you were to grant today special use permit, you could set an unwanted precedent as well, and this precedent would be an invitation for others to apply to put convenience stores in the Central Business District, and perhaps even in... even inside the River District. So, I'm here today to ask you to please vote no. Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker?
Not now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I would say that I did get one email from someone basically voicing his same concerns for the area. Yes?
I did personally tell the applicant the date and time of this meeting, so why they're not here, I, again, I don't know.
This is not an issue, this one's not an issue for me, that's for sure.
Mr. Jones?
What includes a convenience store? Is this anything from Mom and Pop owning this to Dollar General, Family Dollar? Are they convenience stores?
No, and if you hold on one second, I just had it, and now it went away. Got to love technology. The definition of a convenience store in the zoning code. Small retail establishment offering for sale purchased food, for sale, purchased food products, household items, newspapers and magazines, and sandwiches and other prepared foods for off-site consumption. Such establishments typically serve a small market area, i.e. a neighborhood, and should be designed at a scale, size and scale that is compatible with the surrounding community. There is a different definition for retail sales, which is usually what the places like Dollar General or something else falls under.
I understand.
There's a whole slew of issues with this for me. I mean, for one thing, like, do we have any elevations, any plans, any pictures, anything?
No.
From anybody for this? Do...
We have a floor plan, which may not be in the packet, I don't believe it.
Yeah. Well, because the person that wants to do this is not here, and I have a whole raft of questions written down, and I can't get them answered, I'm settled on this already in my mind.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
This person that wants this property, does he have any other convenience stores in the area?
Yes, throughout the city, the immediate area.
Can you tell us any location of any of these?
He has the one at the intersection of Franklin Turnpike and Orphanage Road. He has the one on 58 East before the bypass. He has one on, I believe, on north, further up North Main Street. He was looking at buying that one, I'm not sure if he's acquired that one yet. I believe he also has the one on Mount Cross Road.
How close did you say the nearest convenience store was already?
The next block.
One block.
At Worsham, the one at Worsham Street.
Worsham and Beadham, it's right the second block.
And then the next one is where Richmond Boulevard splits off at the triangle.
And I measured that to half a mile from...
Is the one on Worsham still open? I know at one time they closed down.
It's open.
Yes, it's open.
Okay. We've also got, as you saw in your pack here, that the funeral home also voted, even though they're not in the three hundred feet, they sent a letter of opposition.
Just explain to me, and it's probably self-explanatory, but this structure is a contributing structure to the North Danville Historic District. What does that mean to this case, if anything?
It's a unique little structure, you know, it doesn't, it's not your standard just box building. It's got some interesting architecture to it, so it was deemed contributing when they did the study of the area. What it has to do with this case, we try to give you all the information that we have available. It came up on our records, we wanted to make sure that you knew that it is a contributing structure. They will have to put a small addition on to allow handicap accessibility into it that will just, you know, they'll have to try to make that architecturally appealing, but there's no requirement, we don't have a district or anything else that regulates the exterior appearance. They could construct what they choose to meet the minimum building code.
So, Commissioner of Architectural Review wouldn't have to approve it?
That's what I was...
It's not the old West End District or the River District, the only two we have architectural guidelines on.
They could do anything to the building as far as changing it, even though it is a...
As long as it meets the building code.
I think it would be a shame to mess that building up.
They can't qualify for tax credits or anything else if they apply for it, if they do whatever, but we don't have any exterior controls in that district.
You haven't, they haven't said what they plan to do, leave it such as it is, or...
They do have to put that addition to provide handicap accessibility? Past that point, no, I haven't.
We've got, we have no renderings, no pictures, no, don't even have an applicant here. We don't have any of that.
Exactly.
I'll make a motion if you want.
Okay.
I recommend denial of rezoning application PLSUP 2015-0000-368.
Second.
You have a second?
Second.
Ms. Evans? I had a couple people speak at the same time, I just want to make sure that you got that one.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the items for the public hearing. We need to have the approval of the minutes. Any comments or changes on the minutes? If there isn't any, can I...
Recommend approval.
Got approval, have a second? Got a second, I'll just take a voice call, all the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they pass. Any other business?
You do have cases for next month. As usual, there are some training opportunities out there through the, through the state. Anyone's interested in any Planning Commission training or anything else, please let me know. I do have money budgeted for training, Certified Planning Commissioners Course, so I just want to cover that, usually try to cover it the first of the year. You did announce February 2nd is the Planning Commission date. Okay, I didn't catch that part. This is when we were changing the time schedule.
That's what I saw on my chart, yes, so I figured it would be...
It used to be the second meeting, we're moving that up to the first meeting of the month to try and compress the timeframe for applicants. That's all staff has.
Anything from anybody else? Any more comments?
Are the additional dates for the year on the website, or...
It should be on the website. I sent everybody a calendar, but I can send you out another calendar if you would like.
Could you just send me one?
I will. I'll just send it to everybody if the case...
You can email it.
Anything else? Good, meeting adjourned.